I scared her away. I thought she'd come to receive it. All right, let's go ahead and call to order, this is a work session of the Kent County Board of Commissioners, and we are going to be dealing with the John Ball Zoo Master Plan presentation, so I'm going to turn it over to Peter Diarenzo for this presentation, and you can go from there as far as who else you're going to have talking to us.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you for your time, and today you'll see a presentation on summarizing the feedback that we did from our work sessions and the overarching themes, and I'd like to introduce David and Craig to take it from here. Thank you.
Good morning, everybody, and thank you. Again, my name is David Walsh. I am with Canopy Strategic Partners, based out of Philadelphia, but we're a national planning firm that works with zoos and aquariums. And before I get started, I'll, Craig, introduce some.
Thanks, David. Good to see you guys again. Craig Rhodes with Tess Ray. We're a national architectural and planning firm specializing in zoos and aquariums. Happy to be here.
So what we'd like to do this morning is really just do a brief overview of what we've been doing over the last three months since we saw you last, and summarizing, as Peter said, summarizing some of the feedback that we heard, but then really showing you some of the overall concepts of the master plan and the master plan direction. So when we were here last, in addition to speaking with you, we had two other feedback sessions as part of the master planning work. One was a presentation and input session from, with a number of different partner organizations that have had some relationships, some work with the zoo. So we had 10 different organizations, wide-ranging groups from education partners, conservation partners, and other impact and tourism groups. And it was a really rich discussion in terms of talking about what that future of the zoo could be, what overall trends in the zoo market look like, but getting their feedback into what they wanted to see. Then we also hosted a community session where we had 20 attendees, really representing a number of the neighborhood associations right around the zoo, some business associations, and some other zoo members and donors, and again, providing some overall direction of what is happening in the zoo field as a whole, and how that could impact the overall community. And really what we heard was really some consistent themes throughout in terms of really highlighting the education importance of the zoo and the education mission of the zoo, as well as the conservation aspect, and making sure that the zoo is staying true to its conservation mission. These, in addition to ensuring that the zoo remains a leading attraction, that was important to the tourism folks, some of the business folks, in terms of bringing in visitors into the zoo. And we talked about kind of the overall importance of financial sustainability. Some of the themes that came up is how do we make sure that we are and remain a strong community partner in supporting the community, in re-engaging particular older students so that the zoo doesn't age out. And many zoos, John Ball is not unique in this, that many zoos, when kids age out of it, kind of in the 10 to 12, how do we keep them engaged in coming back and keeping a, really a multi-generational experience? The other thing is they, looking in terms of innovation and wow factors, kind of what are the types of exhibits, and when Craig starts to talk about some of the animals that would be coming as part of the master plan, we heard some good things in terms of having those big exhibits that draw on those wow factors. You know, this is a really busy slide, but the really, the key parts of this is this really supports the, the master plan really supports the overall goals and objectives of the zoo around conservation, compassion, celebration, community, and education, and kind of building on that hub out into all of those key areas. But the master plan really wants to have that animal welfare focus. We heard that as being important in the feedback, making sure that it remains accessible, particularly from an ADA standpoint, that it creates an opportunity for a year-round, I don't want to say we're going to be open year-round, but an experience that really goes multi-seasons. And then in terms of looking at the capacity of how you create a zoo that can support visitation, that really has this, a million-plus visitors a year, and what that carrying capacity would look like, but remaining really true to a strong guest experience. So making sure that the zoo is, remains a destination, is financially sustainable, but stays true to its core mission around education, conservation, and animal welfare. I'll turn to Craig.
Thanks, David. So we've listened to your groups, and we've taken all the, you know, decided what's important at the zoo, those objectives, that wheel that David just showed, and then we got to get to the site and see what we can actually do with the property that you have. One of the things that's really important about not only planning for the future, is looking back to the past and seeing the facilities that you have in place. In 2022, a comprehensive report was done that looked at all the existing facilities and the infrastructure of the zoo, so we can take all that into account, see what kind of condition that is in, what needs to replace, what needs to be repaired. All those things go into a master plan process. So it's not just visioning the future, but it's also making sure we take care of the facilities and the infrastructure that we already have. And that report has, is available at the zoo, and if you want to read 478 pages of really cool stuff about pipes and wires, I'm sure they can make that available to you. So this is probably the most important slide I'm going to show you today. This is a slope analysis of the zoo. And what does that mean? The dark areas, the darker the area is on the plan, the steeper the slope is of the property. As you guys are all aware, that the area in front of the zoo to the east is relatively deadpan flat, and then we get to this beautiful hill, and that's actually the zoo proper as it is today. We can see a large percentage of the zoo is in great, in areas of greater, of really steep slope. What that means to you and to us and to the community is those are areas that are difficult to traverse and meet the standards for the Americans with Disabilities Act, to get people up and down that hill, get people to the habitats and things like that. So all of that needs to be considered when we're planning the zoo of the future. Then the lighter areas are the relatively flat areas. I won't say they're flat, because there's really nothing flat about the John Ball Zoo once you get through the entry. So we take this into consideration as we start planning. And, you know, the darker the area, the least likely it is to be buildable. So, what does that mean for the future? This bubble map is our first shot at organizing the zoo of the future, and probably is one that you guys should be really interested in. And it really, what it does is it takes into advantage, you can see, kind of to the upper and to the right of the plan, is where a majority of the zoo development is now. But we can reuse a lot of that area, because we'd look at that infrastructure plan, we'd look at some of those areas that are aging and need to be replaced, and then how can we develop in those areas? Well, as we're coming in the zoo now, if you've been out to the zoo anytime in the recent past, you'll see the new pygmy hippo habitat, which is part of a larger Waters of the World project that's going on right through the center of the zoo, that will eventually, in the coming, soon, in this, soon, there'll be a North American River Otter Habitat right at the front entry that will continue that Waters of the World. And then in the future, one of the main projects we're looking at is pinnipeds or sea lions. And what's really cool about that, sea lions kind of up into the top part of that blue sphere, if you will, is that sea lions were a major attraction at the John Ball Zoo in the 1950s, so it'd be something to be bringing back, and they're very charismatic and have a great story to tell in terms of the education and all those things that are part of the master plan goal. Then one of the larger areas that will be newly developed is the African area, which is the orange-ish blob, if you will. It's the upper left, and that will include giraffe. That's a project that's coming along soon. There is a nice area of flat-ish space that we can develop up there for giraffe. The challenge to that piece of property is getting to it, and designers are currently working to create a great guest experience, not only to connect that area with the rest of the zoo and create a great giraffe habitat. The areas then, of course, to the upper right, the green, that's where your tigers are now. There'll be an Australian area, and eventually, in that kind of red, pinkish-red bubble, part of the master plan is, we're thinking about putting a tropical dome in that area. What we like about this location for tropical dome is it's relatively close proximity to the front entry. People can come and go, get to it fairly easily. As David mentioned, some of the shoulder seasons are things we're looking at to increase attendance, and a tropical building would be one of those things that would bring people to the zoo through those shoulder seasons, possibly even into the winter in the future. Of course, tropical dome would be, would have all kinds of things like monkeys and birds, and really feel like you're in Central or South America. So it's really the kind of feel we're looking at. That's probably one of the most extensive projects that we're considering right now on the master plan. Then as we travel down kind of into the flat-ish area below the purple and red dots that I've already talked about, well, purple, I didn't talk about that yet. Education facilities, again, part of the goals have been set forth, and the desires of the community is for the zoo to be an educational hub. It is now, and that will continue to be, grow that, grow those programs in a very robust way. Then we get to, down into the flatter area of the zoo, there is plans for a new front entry complex. That entry complex could be everything from event venues to administrative offices, new ways in and out of the zoo, could be a community hub, that kind of, things like that. And then as you get further out, that property kind of remains in its existing use as it is right now, as in parking and overflow parking. So that all, all this development is considered within the area allowed for development for the zoo. And then, one thing that's really important about the zoo is it's sustainable, financially sustainable, and part of the zoo is not just looking at new animals and new areas for those animals, but it's also saying, what's it cost to operate? How do we earn, how do we earn revenue on a daily basis? So we look at those as enterprise zones, and each area, if you will, has its own enterprise zone. Those enterprise zones include things like food and retail offerings, event venues, rental spaces, and things like that, to really create a dynamic experience. So each one of these areas that you see in this plan, each one of those colored areas could be a visit in and of itself. They're intended to be 45 to 75-minute visits, within each one of those areas, and each one of those areas would have a place to rest and enjoy your day, and take in the zoo and observe nature. So, and then so finally, this is our last slide of the morning, and just to give you some of the spaces, animals we're talking about, I've mentioned a few already. The giraffe, the pinniped or sea lion, again, the tropical forest, Australia, everybody loves a good kangaroo, don't they? The education building. There's also a conservation center towards the front of the building as well, to really help tell the story and educate your constituents about the importance of conservation of our planet. And the enterprise zones, again, revenue generation, I didn't mention, could be a lot of play activities and things like that. Here, we're showing a ropes course in this image. So there's a lot to go on. The zoo of the future for Kent County and Grand Rapids, it's going to be a fantastic zoo. You're already one of the best zoos in the country. Peter's telling me you're one of the top five fastest-growing zoos in the country right now, and there's no reason why that shouldn't continue and maybe excel. So, turned over to questions. Peter, did you want to add anything?
Thanks, Craig. Well done. That pretty much covers it. We have had a lot of growth. Kent County is, the growth in Kent County is truly impressive, and that is fueling our growth, along with the growth to the north and to the west, which are our primary and secondary markets. We've had a good year so far. It looks like we're going to finish around 800,000 people, and Tianyu, the Asian Lantern Festival, was number one in the United States. The festival, that company puts the festival on at dozens of other zoos each year, and we beat out Columbus, we beat out Brookfield, Lincoln, Detroit, any of those numbers that have had festivals in the past, at 175,000 people. We actually turned away thousands, not because of the space within the zoo, but we implemented different attendance caps because of limitations around parking. And we had people from all 50 states and all 83 counties, including Canada, attend the Lantern Festival.
All right. Are you ready for questions?
Sure.
At this point, I guess as we have a few, Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, the question and comment, what really drives the ambition for this growth? It seems like, I mean, this is a hugely different zoo than the one I took my kids to, you know, 15 years ago.
Right. I would say, first I'll answer your question directly. What drives the ambition for the growth is our mission impact, our ability to serve the broader community, including the other cities within Kent County, to serve our audience. But the main reason is, our mission is to serve our community and the protection of wildlife and wild places. And that growth allows us to do that. It also allows us to operate financially sustainable with the funding that we receive. And then, I'll kind of go on a tangent here. The reality is, other zoos across the country, for example, Detroit Zoo, receive significant funding, and they continue to grow. So if we were to hypothetically stay flat, they would continue to grow, you'd see our attendance drop, we'd no longer be financially sustainable. Those are the mechanics behind the scenes, but we grow to save wildlife and wild places. Eighty-three percent of our conservation efforts are in the state of Michigan. We have one of the largest stormwater projects, you know, we redirect almost 40 million gallons of stormwater per year that doesn't enter the Grand River. We successfully are saving the most endangered species in North America, which is native right here in West Michigan. We've had so much success that, matter of fact, when we did these engagements to pull this data, even the United States Fish and Wildlife attended, the Michigan DNR, because of our success in saving wildlife and wild places. And that growth allows us to fuel that, because all of that's funded through revenue from operations.
Yeah, to me, it seems that, like, growth can become an ambition for itself, rather than simply serving the interests of the community here. And I'm not sure that the community has agreed that competing with Detroit Zoo is necessarily the goal for having John Ball Park. So I think that that's something to consider. Also, the way the park was described, the map of the park was described, it seems like now the entire park is part of the zoo. And especially the areas for parking, I feel like the last time you came before us asking us for our support, we were backed into a corner. And we were backed into a corner that went against the interests of the residents of the community, and even though perhaps the broader Kent County community would have been served well by expanding that parking, it wasn't done in necessarily collaboration with the broader Kent County, and that community still exists. 20 years ago, when, one of the first votes I remember taking, I took my daughter, who was three years old, four years old, to go vote at Mulett Park School for whether or not we would move and expand investment in Meyer Gardens for a zoo. And my daughter was like, I like our zoo. It was a neighborhood zoo. We would go to the zoo, we would go to the playground, then we would go get ice cream, and then we would go home. It's not, it's not Disney World. It was our community zoo. And I know that you have other ambitions for asking the public for our investment, and it seems like, especially the people that live in that community, are not happy with the engagement that they have with your entity. And as far as I'm, I only have a few months more on this board, but I really feel like you need to have solid community input in that neighborhood, and especially before you come and ask this committee, this commission, for support for the aquarium.
It's great feedback. Regarding the use of the space in front, where it says overflow parking and parking, I'll defer to the county, to Al. The direction we're receiving under the current operating agreement is, that area is to help support the zoo, and when it's not in use, to make it available to the community, with the exception, of course, the first 150 feet. I think I'll defer to the county as well to speak to the level of neighborhood engagement we've done over the last few years.
You know, it's not neighborhood engagement to the extent of the number of events you hold. It's neighborhood engagement to the extent of how the neighborhood feels about that engagement. That is what's most important. I mean, we can, we can list dates that meetings occurred. That's not necessarily the same as the community feeling engaged in that work. And I was really under the impression, when we supported this back in January, that that land, that overflow parking area, was going to be protected for park. But I guess I could have been wrong.
I'll defer to the county on that.
Just to clarify, we did, I think, I believed everybody was under the same understanding that there isn't technically a park there, that when you look at the terms of the transfer of the property from the city to the county, the whole property was to be used for the benefit of a zoological garden. And so I think we confirm that. Now, we did set up a committee that continues to meet. We met two weeks ago. We've met, I think, at least every month since this issue went before the board, and we continue to hammer out the zoos involved on the, we have representatives of the neighborhood, of neighborhood associations of the zoo, of the county. I attend those, and we do meet regularly to work through problems or issues that the neighborhood has with sound, noise, light, some of those kinds of things. So I think, I think Peter did say it correctly, that we want to, there's, the entire facility was set aside back in 1987 for the purposes of the zoological garden. However, since the zoological garden hasn't needed the entire site, the portion that isn't being used for that, the directive has been to use that for the benefit of the community. Now, we know very well that in the hearts and minds of people that live around there, there's a John Ball Park, but that is, that is, again, in the hearts and minds of the people and not in the legal status of the property.
Yeah, I would add, it's not just a technicality, it's a legal reality. It may only be used as a zoo. It may not be used as a park under the legal restrictions.
So we've been illegally using the land for the last?
No.
Decades?
No. The primary public use is for a zoo. And if it's not required to be used for the zoo, it may certainly be used for any other purpose that's legal and public, which is what has happened.
But the law doesn't say that we have to expand that space for the zoo.
The deed says it may only be used for zoo purposes. Now, if the zoo purposes don't require it, for purposes of supporting the zoo at the time, they may make it for other purposes, and that's what we've historically done.
But it still seems like it's a, it's our, it's also a political decision. It's our decision as to how the zoo uses it. Otherwise, we wouldn't be here, right?
That is correct. But to say that we may legally expand if the zoo needs it, we have to make that as our primary consideration, because the deed says it may only be used for zoo purposes. And if the zoo needs it, then that's the primary legal purpose. Right? We're debating. We can debate later.
No, well, this, so this puts the zoo board as the, so this, so in a way, it's not even our decision. I mean, otherwise, why are we approving this plan? Because if the zoo has full right to do whatever they want on that land.
No, it has to come back to us. We have to, this board needs to approve the master plan.
Okay. So this, so this decision is not a legal decision. It's our political decision.
It's a, of course.
It's our political decision. My point would be that, under the terms of the deed, if politically we said, we decided to turn this into a community park, we would be in violation of the deed.
But it's already a community park.
Well, it's not a community park. It's a zoo that's being made available to the community currently for purposes of public use. The deed says if you ever stop using it for purposes of a zoo, then you may be in violation of the terms of the deed and the property brings it back to the city.
Well, we've already been doing that.
No. We've been using it for secondary purposes, because the zoo has indicated it doesn't necessarily need it at that time. They came to us in January saying, we do start needing it for purposes of parking, and that's what we looked at.
So if we refuse the request, then we have to have the land back to the city?
Well, I don't have to, but it's at risk of it going back to the city.
Or if we should bring the city into that discussion?
We have talked to the city. I know what their answer is, but yes.
Thank you, Chair. I'm wondering if Administrator Vanderburg can specify this group that you're meeting with every two weeks. Is that the liaison committee that you're talking about? We talked about creating a liaison committee of community members.
Yes.
That is that. Okay.
Yes.
Is that part of the master plan, that that committee?
We have discussed the master plan at times. If there's been questions on process or that sort of thing, but that, the purpose of that group has not been to hear, gather comments about the master plan.
That's for us.
Right.
I wonder if there is, I mean, if that would be appropriate for the master plan to have that sort of built in, that there is community, just because of the nature of its setting, and the fact that maybe technically it's not a park, but in every other way, it behaves like a park and appears like a park. I just wonder, given that reality, whether that is an appropriate addition to the master plan.
I think it's important to note that even though the zoo didn't use the full site for a zoo, there's an old master plan. Josh showed me, I don't know, it's at least, at least the 70s, well before the county owned it, that showed the full park as a zoo. And when I was here the first time, one of the issues that came forward, in fact, I think that's how Carol got her entree in the county government, was the county was proposing to place an elephant exhibit well into what has been considered John Ball Park. So it isn't that it's a new concept. I think it's been a decades-old concept, that even before the county, the property, the reason the city required the whole property to be used as a zoo, that's what the city had planned to do with it in the decades prior to the county taking ownership of it.
Let me add as well that there's another document where that might be a more appropriate conversation, that is the operating agreement, because the county owns this and they contract with the zoo for purposes of operating it. We are taking a look at whether or not, at the same time, we need to do some revisions to that, and that may be the point where we raise the question of how do we structure if we do a liaison committee. That might be more appropriate than in a master plan concept.
Commissioner Hennessy.
Our administrator and I do go way back to the early 2000s on this, and it, and actually, I go back even further into the 1980s when we did the cultural consolidation ideas, and it was turned down by the voters at that point. And so that's, that is the point. The city was not able to continue to fund, they had the museum, they had the zoo, and so that's, so part of the division became, they kept the museum at that point, and we took over the zoo. Part of the city's thing to, that they had to do was, with this deed, that it was actually, despite this talk about it being all zoo, it was defined and in the master plan of the city as a park. And to avoid another full vote of the people, when the deed was written, it basically, and, you know, I may be taking a little liberties, but generally, as the deed was written, the city took, took it out of the master plan for being a park. And that's what's causing us some difficulty here. But there was a statement at that time by the Kent County Board of Commissioners, that we, as members of the Kent County Board of Commissioners, would like to restate to the community our commitment, not only to operate John Ball Zoo in a responsible manner, but to be good neighbors and maintain John Ball Park as a quality neighborhood park. And, you know, it goes on from there. And it was signed by, you know, many names that we will still be familiar with, including Marj Brant, Ten Jack, Bodima, Marv Hedema, Kathy Kuhn, Richard Vandermolen, and Jim Marge Byington, Jack Bodima, Marv Hedema, Kathy Kuhn, Richard Vandermolen, and Jim Vaughn. So, I mean, and other commissioners at the time. And so there, so we have a legal deed that says one thing, and there's a background story to it, and actually went to the courts at one point. But then there was this intent that was given, you know, and reinforced by both the city and the county in a verbal way, to be good neighbors, if you want to say good neighborhood plan or community benefits plan, to be good neighbors, and to continue to operate a quality neighborhood park. I have questions too, but I just wanted to get that out there right now.
Okay, I think Commissioner, Vice Chair Green. Nope, Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Chair. My question is more to Al about this community benefits agreement. Is that part of what you're meeting with this group about?
We're not discussing a community benefits agreement at this time. We've talked more philosophically about whether there should be one or not. And I think early on, there were some people in different settings, I had the position that we should almost have a template of a community benefits agreement that applies to the zoo, big projects of the day like the soccer stadium. But no, we haven't really, we haven't really moved forward on anything like that.
Do we plan on moving forward with that before we get to, you know, the vote before November?
I think that the crucial point is this. I think people, and I'm overgeneralizing. I'm not trying to speak for everyone, I'm trying to speak to what I've heard. What I've heard from different folks in the neighborhood, and this is a topic that's several months old now, it isn't a current topic when we meet with them. But what I've heard is that they, to them, the community benefits agreement means drawing a line through the zoo property and designating a portion of that permanently as park, which would not be inconsistent with the deed. And so if we get to a point of discussing something other than that, I mean, obviously, we're always welcome to hear folks' opinions and what makes sense. But if that's the line, that's not a good place to start because we really can't do that.
Okay, so if we've heard this, is there a way for us to get past hearing and get in the room together so that we can have a clear understanding of what that can look like, the community partner agreement? But if it can't work, and if we can't do it, I think that we need to know now before we have to vote on that.
Yeah, we can, we can discuss that further.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, now Vice Chair Green.
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to ask a couple more questions related to some of Commissioner Baker's comments. My understanding as well regarding the, what would remain of the kind of gravel parking space that we have today that's, you know, sometimes utilized for that and sometimes not, but often in the summer, was also that we would not, I remember specifically seeing drawings that had that as a, you know, soccer nets and stuff out there. So it seems like it would be really hard to use that for both an overflow space and then maintain it in that way. Understanding that we don't get a parking lot built, you know, tomorrow or immediately after this is approved. But I guess where are we at with that piece of it? Because I, I do think that's a bit of a give and take. And I understand, I don't, you know, I get the legal piece of the deed and all that, but where are we at with that? Because I do think there was some understanding from this group that that would be more closely aligned with what it would be used for.
Sure. We did get the plan submitted per the zoo operating agreement a week ago. And we have responded, our facilities director looked it over as a civil engineer, and we had a few areas that we needed more information on, and then also some information on funding. So we sent that back a couple days ago, and then once we get that back per the zoo operating agreement, if everything's aligned, then I would approve that and they would be off and running.
Okay, but in terms of what the, thank you, but in terms of the usage of that, that space, or what remains of it after we do the other kind of improvements or changes, is that our intention as it's here to still be overflow space? Or is it the intention that it would be, you know, more of a maintained, kind of an open space that could be, you know, multi-use either for the zoo or for the community?
I'm gonna, I could give an answer, but I'm gonna pass that on to Peter.
Right. So when, we were here in January and some of the negotiations with some of the neighborhood groups that the county helped lead, the size of the original paved space is about half, or a little less than half than the 2015 master plan. And so while the new parking will absolutely reduce the number of cars in the overflow, beyond a shadow of a doubt, what, it's designated overflow in alignment with the operating agreement, and on busy days, there would still be the opportunity to use that as overflow. And then when the cars aren't there, it's a field. With the operating agreement, while that area is set aside contractually for use to support the zoo, the zoo for decades, when it hasn't needed the space, why not allow the community to use it? And as the county's population has grown over the years, more people are coming to the zoo. There's less parking currently than the 1960s. And obviously, the county has grown many times that since the 1960s.
I, I'm, I'm very, very confused because I, I felt like the, when we had this conversation earlier in the year, I was very much supportive of the direction that the zoo wanted to go, even though I know a lot of folks were not. My, my understanding that I came out of it, maybe I was wrong, commissioners or staff can correct me. But my understanding was that we would, you know, ultimately alleviate some of the need of you needing that space for parking with the addition of the new spaces in the corner at the bottom of the hill. So that was, that was what I came away with, and that was one of the things that kind of helped me move it forward. You know, neighbors aren't gonna like what I'm about to say, and I don't say it lightly, but if we're gonna use it for parking, I would just as soon use it for parking. I mean, if we're gonna have cars parked on it and it's not a community use, I know that we have winter months when you guys are out of season and that kind of thing, but I'd rather have a space that's a parking lot or not, and maybe that's not realistic. I know there's other factors in the parking thing longer term, but that was just what I came out of that, so please, if somebody can correct me if I'm wrong.
I think you're right, but I think it was in terms of how many days cars would need to be parked on the grass. And I think it was dramatically reducing that number down to, what, 37? I don't know. That's the number that stuck in my head.
That's correct.
From daily, pretty much throughout the summer.
And I may be remembering wrong, but there was a discussion around, you know, we don't know how the county's gonna grow in five, 10, 15 years, and assuming there's funding available from the county or from whomever to build and maintain a parking garage, why pave that space now when we don't know what the future will bring? So it's, it kind of goes back to what the zoo's been doing for the last few decades. If we're not using the space, why not make it available? And once we pave that space out front and you build, if the funding becomes available to build and maintain the garage, you have a paved parking lot that may or may not be needed at that time. So we're just trying to create the space as much as possible for the community. We absolutely expect to have less cars in that overflow and to not go as far. Currently, that overflow is, starts getting used in April and is anticipated to be used all the way through October. Now, September, August, seven days a week, you're, you're only going maybe a third of the way on the weekdays versus all the way to the 150-foot line.
Okay. I, that's helpful, Peter and Al. I just, it feels like a disconnect from what my understanding was the last time we talked about it. And I just want to make sure that we're, that we're on the same page. Don't get me wrong, I know you guys need the spaces. This is a community asset. We're trying to balance the neighbors' concerns and needs with, you know, my folks in Algoma Township, I want them to use this asset, the zoo, I want them to come down and visit. They're not taking a bus, they're not doing anything else. If they're gonna use it, they're gonna take their van and load up their kids and go down and use it. So that's, I understand the balance, and I, you know, I also, please don't misunderstand, Peter, I really appreciate the growth vision here too. I mean, I, I really like that trajectory. I've heard comments that don't like that trajectory. I think that's exceptional. It fits with what we're moving toward with other of our public assets in Kent County. So, so thank you. I just want to make sure that we've got clarification on those pieces.
Commissioner Burle.
Thank you, Chair. You know, Peter, the master plan, I love it, as Kent County, I mean, this is a great community asset, regional asset. And as we grow, I mean, we're fooling ourselves if we think that by adding an amphitheater, soccer stadium, an aquarium, that the zoo is not gonna grow along with that. So our memberships, our amount of people visiting, it's one of the best attractions we have in our community for the price. To bring your family as a zoo society member, people are just gonna keep on coming in and coming, and it's an affordable way of entertainment for our community. Sometimes you think that, no, good deed goes unpunished, right? You're allowing people to use a space for a park, and, you know, here it comes biting you back in the butt. And unless you're about 150 years old, I don't think this should be a surprise that this is a zoo, right? That as your community grows, the asset grows, parking needs grow, exhibits grow. So, again, we gotta look out for what's best for Kent County, what's best for our asset. We're not moving this asset, right? I mean, this is, this would be an expensive, expensive move. We couldn't do it, what, 15, 20 years ago? We're not gonna do it now. So again, we're fooling ourselves if we don't think some of these things are gonna happen. So I love the growth. I think we gotta grow or we die, right? So I think it's a great, great plan. Again, I appreciate all the time that was put into it. I was, you know, thinking about the hilly terrain, right? That it, it's a negative, but an asset, right? I mean, it's part of what makes John Ball Zoo really special. I was thinking of my time in San Diego Zoo last year or two as well. They have the same issues, right? They have the same issues as we do here at John Ball Zoo, and they're the one, one of the number one rated zoos in the world and definitely here in the U.S. So again, I think, I think that can be an asset as well. So I guess the only thing, I think I made a comment to Commissioner Hennessy one time, and Peter, I don't know if I made it to you, I think it drives my wife nuts when we go to either museums or zoos. I love to read, or I like to, I wanna know a little bit more. I would love to someday see a QR code, this is silly, this is my own personal thing, a QR code that talks about where that animal came from, the name of it, what zoo they came from, how it was born. I think that would be the neatest thing to learn a little bit more about the zoo animals that way. And maybe you have something like that, what a, what a really neat feature that could potentially be. But again, keep up the good work, and again, we can't keep everybody happy. I didn't realize I was on a planning commission, never been on one, never signed up for one. But, you know, coming from city government as well, you know, these are things that not everybody's gonna be happy with you all the time. It just, it just doesn't happen. And to pacify a few for the many, I just don't see it. It's a great design.
Thank you. And if I may, I think it's also worth noting that while there are, as you noted, people that are unhappy, and it's also worth noting that there is strong support within the West Side for the zoo, including some of the neighborhood organizations like West Grand. But I'm not naive. I know it appears the pattern is the closer you get to the zoo, meaning if you're directly across the street, it impacts, it understandably impacts them greater. Also, the business district, the increase in revenue they've been enjoying because of the, of the region's success, including the zoo. We also, eight, nine years ago, we only had about 30 employees that lived in the West Side. We now have over 200 employees that live in the West Side. And our year-round employees did free healthcare, they're considerably above a living wage. Our average wage is much higher than many for-profits because the nature of the work is very technical.
All right, Commissioner DeBoer.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Peter, for being here and for all your work on this. I am looking at a January 12 concept plan revision that was sent to our emails. And it does have a lot of that overflow parking that says open recreation area. And in my mind, I kind of thought that that would be a field, just from reading that. And I'm not necessarily against having it be overflow parking, but it just does seem a little bit different than what we had heard in January. So I would appreciate a little bit more explanation of why the change, and just, just for my own due diligence, and I get the expansion and I get that we have to serve the whole community and the whole county, but it does just seem a little bit different than what I originally had thought.
So, I'm not sure how to answer that. I guess going back to the public minutes, and we've been consistent in our messaging that that area, instead of developing it, it would be a flat, empty space, but it would be used for overflow. And the greater the paved spaces, the less often that would be used. I'm not privy to some of the, maybe the closed session meetings that have happened without us present, but the drawings that we've submitted over the multiple revisions were noted in the packet that this area could be used for overflow, or in my public comment during the presentation. I don't have what you have in front of you, but I'm guessing somewhere in that packet, there's discussion around how on peak days that cars would still continue to park there. There was a conversation going, we've engaged thousands of homes since 2018, and we've had hundreds and hundreds of community members that we've engaged since 2018. And there was discussion around how do we develop the parking in the front and the current administration building so that we could preserve 17 acres that would always be used for open recreation? Maybe that's the map that you have in front of you. The direction I received from the county was, I did not have the authority as an operator to bind the property for those 17 dedicated acres in return for the parking. The parking that was in that original plan, paved-wise, is about two and a half times the current paved parking against the hill. And I think in the interest of trying to work to a middle ground, we didn't go that route. But I'm out of my league, I defer to the county.
I will just clarify, I don't recall we've ever had closed sessions on this issue. We've had lots of conversations, but I'm not sure we ever had...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm not implying there was one. I'm implying there may have been dialogue without me present. I apologize.
Oh, I guarantee you that.
All right. I'm sorry, are you done, Commissioner DeBoer? All right. Commissioner McLeod.
Thank you, Chair. So, thank you for, you know, presenting this information. I guess, I'm still, you know, I do believe that I had the same assumption as Commissioner Green and Commissioner DeBoer, that, you know, that that space that was there would still be available and open to use by the community a bit more than what it looks like right now. I'm concerned though, because I, I'm still concerned because I believe that the community still needs to, the larger community still needs to be able to feel like they've had some input and not just have been presented to and talked to about this. And I know there's been lots of meetings, lots of, you know, information sharing with the community and that, but there's still a significant amount of community members that live in the area. Again, this is not in my backyard, it's not in, you know, many of the people around this daisies backyard. I do believe that there is still a considerable amount of people that feel like they were not able to provide actual input on this master plan that is going to be in their backyards. And so I feel like, you know, we're moving along with the legal explanation of what this, this zoo land can be used for, and I agree with, you know, we need to stay within that. But I also feel like we need to make sure that the people who have to live in this area feel like they are not having something stripped away from them that they've been able to use as a park, no matter what you've called it. We know it's a zoological garden space, get that. But we've used it for years as a park, and it's been labeled a park, even though technically we probably weren't supposed to do that. So there's all of these different dynamics, but at the end of the day, the... we've used it for years as a park, and it's been labeled a park, even though technically we probably weren't supposed to do that. So, there's all of these different dynamics. But at the end of the day, the public needs to be able to feel, the public that, again, lives in that area, has been able to use this area as a park, they, they need to be able to understand why it's now not being able to be used that way, and what they're going to get in return. I don't think that a community benefits agreement is, should be off the table. Again, this is in somebody's backyard, a lot of people's backyards. And I just feel like we, we need to make sure that there's a concerted effort to hear and receive input about how, how we can transform the space that they've been able to use in this way for years into something that they still have access to, even if it looks differently. I just, we have to be able to come to a common ground on that. And I don't feel like this plan does that. We're obviously expanding the zoo. I understand all the economic and, you know, all these other things that have been discussed. But at the end of the day, this is not in everyone's backyard. And if it was, would you think differently about the economic impact, all the things that has been described here today, if it was literally in your backyard? And I would, you know, have a mother that, you know, raised four children and went to the zoo all the time when we lived in Lansing and when we moved here. It's really important that there is a space for the community to be able to use, and not to have to pay for, to get into, to use in, you know, in, in, in some sort of community beneficial way. And I think that we have to listen to those voices. And economics does not rule everything at the end of the day because people still live here. This park, this zoo is in the middle of a neighborhood. And I think we can't lose sight of that. Even if there's money to be gained, there's exhibits that need to be, you know, to move forward, we have to be able to, to just listen to those people and be able to incorporate their voices into whatever comes of this. I want the zoo to expand, want to, you know, understand how we can, you know, come to some middle ground. But we have to make sure that a majority of those voices are heard, and that it's documented that they're heard, and that we have accommodated at least some of what they've asked for. And I don't think a park space, even if you don't call it a park space, it should be something available for those families, those people that live in the area to be able to use within this space, because they've been able to do it, even if we weren't necessarily titling it the same way that it should be legally. It's been used in that way, and we can't just snatch it out from under them. So, again, this plan seems to make, it looks different than I would have expected it to look from January when we were, you know, talking about this before. And so, I just, I just feel like we need to have a bit more information, and maybe not information, a bit more clarity in terms of we're stripping something away that the community has been able to use for some time. How do we merge those two and be able to get to some resolution?
Let me see if anyone's first. All right, go ahead. Commissioner Hennessy.
To follow up here, this, the zoo does sit in the middle of a federally designated at-risk neighborhood. So, it certainly deserves the consideration of everything you do, and how does it impact that particular neighborhood. It is more than a just not in my backyard type of thing. And the other thing, we talk about parking. What we have not mentioned yet today is that there's a road that will be built in from Fulton to Butterworth. And so, we're taking up over an acre of space just with a road, and that's not parking. And the, and I think we, sometimes our, the confusion is, there has been a bit of a moving target on some of the explanations or some of the goals as we've gone through the process. I'm looking at a letter sent on October 12 of last year from the chairman of the John Ball Zoo Board, that John Ball Zoo has fully reviewed the proposed designated park space, which is to be free of cars regardless of zoo attendance after the parking amendment plan is completed and all development west of the park plan is designated for zoo use. So, there's been a moving target here as well. And I think that that's one of the things that continues to confound all of us as we try to figure out what's going on. And, you know, I certainly value the zoological and conservation values of, of the zoo. But this plan also, underlying it, we're talking about the wow factors. And, you know, there's more to life than the practical present. And, you know, we're, we're really moving to destroying a historic cultural asset. And we're going to be doing it for the wow factors, the plastic dinosaurs, the Legos, the night show, and, you know, amusement park type activities. That's not strictly zoo. And, you know, and how, and to handle the topographical issues, down will come the trees. We will be changing the landscape. I look at these great big bubbles, which don't tell me a lot, but give me an indication that those kinds of things are going to be affected as well. So, you know, this all began years and years ago. But shame on us, you know, we're continuing to let it go. We're trying to create Disneyland on a postage stamp, and it just doesn't work. But my, my one question is, and it's been alluded to here, is, is there any kind of, in your considerations, any kind of a boundary that you're now considering between green space and zoo? Is there any line of demarcation?
There is, and it's contractual. And, and to come back to the letter you're referencing as a zoo board member, the date of that letter, you're familiar with, that was the original plan on the parking, which was more than double the existing parking that was later submitted. And also, that letter was done before the county said we cannot bind the use of that property in conflict with the deed. So, in response to the county, we updated the master plan at many of the later meetings that we presented to the county. Regarding the line that can't be developed, contractually, there's 150-foot line all the way around the, the property where the residential is, that can't be developed. And as the, I don't know what the future is going to bring, whether there's a parking garage or not, but that's going to really drive what that development is in the future into the zoo support area that is currently being used by many people as a park.
I mentioned that because it is, it is a matter that, you know, it's sort of a changing target, in, in terms of our considerations as well. It's, it's a changing target. But the growth is, what I see is the growth right now is not coming strictly, you know, there's a lot of things here for zoo, that are strictly zoo. But we're doing amusement park type activities. You know, especially, you know, let's look at the light show of 175,000 people. So, to say that we don't pay attention to a park or to green space here.
We would not define that as a light show. It fulfills our mission, and including the conservation messaging that, and the educational messaging, as you walk through the space at night and read the, the conservation messaging.
This, this is certainly a bubble map. It doesn't show us everything. But it really does reflect a radical change from what we have known and have lived with on the, in our city and on the West Side for many years. And I do think that there are many more considerations that we need to give to the neighbors who have been there forever. And, and what does the road mean? Someone called me last night and, and said if they, you know, if you start to use that as your gateway in, in charging people to get in, which is not allowed right now for Kent County residents under the millage, we understand that. But, but if you start to do things like that, then what will be the impact on the neighbors? You know, where are they going to be parking? They're going to be parking every free space they can find. And what will be the impact on the traffic? We know this is really very landbound. There's not major roads going in. And as you continue to grow the guests, I mean, I, I really think we need to work stronger than what we're doing now in working to work with the neighbors. And I, I think it needs to be revived in many ways because...
There is an E-dress and In-dress path to that parking lot that you're referring to as a road. Also, the current In-dress and E-dress, or, or road if you will, is being removed under the current parking plan. So, the road that goes directly into the neighborhood is being removed, meaning that the pavement's being torn up. And there's a new In-dress, E-dress going to Butterworth. It is larger in size or length to accommodate the, the parking.
I would point out, I think this is not the master plan. A plan document is yet to come down the road for our consideration in more detail later.
Right. This is, yeah, this is sort of a bubble outline of, of where things will go. But it does also reflect, you know, bring major changes in terms of putting exhibits forward. What, what physical, under this, under, you know, what, how you're envisioning it, what physical structures do you, and do you see is coming down or being affected by the future development of this?
Well, we don't have a detailed construction drawing or instrumented design of the master plan right now, as, as Chair Stack referenced. But I will refer to the 2015 master plan, or the 2003 master plan, or the one in the 1990s. There are structures out front. Currently, the, the current active master plan has a three-story education building against the pond, actually in the pond, like partly in the pond. And there's some animal exhibits down at the base of the hill as well. And I'm doing this from memory, but it's a public document on the county side.
So, for clarification, Peter, correct me, but there is an existing master plan. It is in place. And unless the commission approves a change or a new one, that one stays in place until that happens.
That's correct. And, and I, I could be wrong in interpreting this, but I believe the purpose of a master plan and the operating agreement to be approved by the county, because these are all county assets, and we're the operator, is to ensure that if for some reason the, the 501(c)(3) ourselves were to go defund, that the county knows what they're inheriting from an asset standpoint.
That would be one of the reasons, yeah. Commissioner Burle.
Thank you Chair Stack. Again, you know, a master plan's a guide, a plan. There's nothing set in stone in master plans. I know Commissioner Green and I have, have done that with the township that he was served on, and me in the city of Wyoming. And these are meant to change. So, so again, I, I think this is a, a great step forward. This is going to look totally different in 10 years. I think it'll look different in five years. I think we'll see, you know, I, I don't think parking structures look the, the best in the world, but I do understand Commissioner Hennessy has, had made that comment in the past. I mean, if, if we are talking a, a parking ramp in the next five or 10 years, what a great problem for us to have, right?
Absolutely.
That means that we have record attendance. That means you're probably expanding some exhibits. That means you're probably coming, again, expanding in different areas. So, again, this is a, an idea. This is just thoughts. This has given us an asset outlook to protect the county's interests. Again, this is, it'll look different in five or 10 years. But what a, what a great plan for right now for us to go and be guided by over the next 10 years. But, again, I think it'd be nothing better than seeing you within the next five years with, with more changes that would definitely benefit the community, the community as well. So, again, nice work. Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, I think in general, I just feel like you're building, you are building a culture of mistrust for the zoo. And I think that for what you want to do in the future, you need to build that trust. And to some extent, I kind of just heard a sense that if, I mean, we're, we, you know, I got, I got backed into a corner once with that 2015 plan. And you just mentioned it again. And also, the semi-threat that, you know, if the 501(c)(3) goes under, then we got to take over the responsibility. So, that's not a way to build trust. And I think that the community needs trust, especially with what you want to ask for in the future. I just feel really uncomfortable with this. And maybe the way Commissioner DeBoer saw that map in January was incorrect, but several of us have the same sense that that's what we are voting on. And now, we might have learned that we didn't read it right. We were misunderstanding the intent. And if you don't agree with it, we'll go back to the 2015 plan. That is not a way to build trust in this community. And I, you know, it's, it's getting more difficult to support these initiatives. So, I, you know, I just really think that what my advice to you is to build some trust in the community. And not just, not just to use legalese and power to do it.
I appreciate the feedback. I would defer that we're operating within the constraints of the operating agreement. And if there is a change in the deed or the use of land, we'll absolutely comply to it.
Yeah, let me, let me say, I probably am the one that brought the 2015 master plan, and it was merely to clarify that the way this functions, that is the plan, and it'll stay the plan until and unless this commission approves a different plan. So, that's, that's just the way it is. So, I'm sorry about that. And you had...
Yeah, Mr. Chair, in the spirit of trust, I asked Josh to put together a chronology, starting when we first started this discussion of amending the 2015 plan for parking. We'll build a chronology of every meeting where something was said, what was said that got us to the map that we have today. Because I think, I think this is factual. I think we can, we can show what maps were shown, what discussion was had, and how we ended up where we're at. And I think we need to be on the same page, because otherwise, anything else we discuss will be tainted by that.
If I may, I, I think it's also worth noting that the plan that is being executed today, and with the amendment in the parking plan, is significantly less paved spaces than the current 2015 plan. The current 2015 plan uses the entire park area that the community uses as overflow. I wasn't here for the 2015 plan. I can't speak to how it was made. But we've spent many meetings engaging literally thousands of homes and hundreds of neighbors. And we came back with a plan that significantly used less space than the, than the master plan we inherited. Again, I can't speak to what happened before 2016. What I can speak to is we've set aside far more recreational space than what was planned in the past.
So, I can probably speak to what happened before. I, I think my file in the zoo is second only to the ARPA file I have. And so, I spent a lot of time going through the historical development here. And this tension between a local neighborhood park use and a regional asset, it appears to be present almost from the beginning. And the problem is that there, there's just an inherent tension between those. And it strikes me that, that as a broader community, and I mean that as this neighborhood, the city, the county, we crossed the Rubicon back in 87, when the city made the decision to abandon this as a local park, take it out of their master plan, deed it to the county, and ask the county to take it over as a regional asset. Not as a local park, but as a regional asset. The city did ask, in fact mandated, that there be a buffer zone. That's a 150-foot zone. That's, that's not negotiable. It is what it is. But beyond that, they mandated that we take it over to be a regional asset. And we did. The county took it over not to be a local park, not to be a neighborhood accommodation, but to be a regional asset, a zoo. I see that there's no question that the county from the get-go asked and operated this zoo in a way to best be a good neighbor to this region, to the neighborhood. At no time do I see that the county or the zoo was asked to abandon its primary purpose and function. In fact, quite the opposite. It was to, that must be your goal. We're not going to ask you to run a local neighborhood park. That, we don't do that. That would be the city. Now, can the county say, you know, we've decided we want part of this to be a local neighborhood park? We'll abandon part of it and deed it back to the city? I suppose in theory, we could do that. I, I would be strongly opposed to trying to be a Grand Rapids local neighborhood park system. If we don't want to have this, we want it to be a local neighborhood park, send it back to the city. I know they don't want it, but we could. But we didn't do that. We took it as a regional asset. Our primary fiduciary duty is to run this as a regional asset for the community as a zoo. We really appreciate the fact that where you've been able to accommodate the neighbors and to allow for local uses without interfering and frustrating your vision, that's great. That's part of what we asked you to do, be a good neighbor. But again, we've never asked you to abandon your vision. And when you're... neighbor. But again, we've never asked you to abandon your vision. And when your vision requires you to engage and change that allocation of local use, that's what we're asking you to do. Now ultimately, this commission has to decide. That's right. Ultimately, we've got to make that decision whether or not we want to set aside permanently part of this back as a park and deed it back to the city, or whether we're going to continue to fulfill our fiduciary duty and use all of that property except for the buffer zone for purposes of a regional zoo that is the best it can be. So unless we make that decision, I would continue to urge you to find ways to make this space usable as the best zoo we can have. If you can accommodate the community and not compromise on that, that's great. We'll continue to be the best neighbors we can. Now, having said that, getting back to why we're here, let us to talk about the proposed master plan for uses going forward. Does anyone else have any questions or comments on the proposed uses, perhaps other than the local park, parking issue? We've kind of peeked that one out. No? A lot of stares. So I said something wrong, Peter. Sorry about that. Anything else that you have to present to us?
No, thank, thank you for your time.
Yep.
And, and all of your feedback.
All right. Now, we'll move on with our agenda. There are, I think, two other items. I don't have it in front of me. But I know there's a public comment because this is a work session. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to address us at this point? If so, please step up to the podium. Please identify yourself by name and address. And you have up to three minutes.
My name is Margot Sodini Johnson. I live at 757 Butterworth. I've been a neighbor in, on the west side since 1994. So I'm very familiar with the history of many of these discussions. And thank you Tony and thank you Carol for reiterating what the original understanding of the neighborhood was back when the city granted it that we would, that we would have a park. And we do want a CBA, a, a community benefit agreement. We want a legally binding one. All I've heard here is contractual, contractual, contractual. The deed drives it and therefore we can do all the things that you've recommended. So that's why we want a contractual legally binding community benefit agreement too. You know, the neighbors that did support it have, when I asked them why, I said, how do you feel about the road going through the middle? They go, what road? And then I have other neighbors who contact me who say, well, what about the things we said at the master planning sessions? Nothing. We weren't listened to at all. Is it just for them to present what the plan is? And I can't answer that because we're losing our, our park. So yes, we as a neighborhood have the stadium coming in on one end. We have the zoo expanding on the other, which the director said they're going to grow out of. It's, you know, their future plans that won't even be able to accommodate the future plans. So why do it here? We need a community benefit agreement. Some of the things we questioned was no parking at the stadium because people are willing to walk 15 minutes, but they're not willing to walk 15 minutes to get to the zoo. So there's contradictions that we're hearing all the time. And I do wish you would slow down as a group and revisit some of these things because of the inconsistencies have created trust issues, quite frankly. And Al, again, a legally binding community benefit agreement would help with our relationships going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else from the public wishing to address us? I don't see. Oh, I do see someone else. Good morning, Barrett.
Good morning. My name is Caleb Takama. I live at 201 Ives. I'm here to share a message from Amy and Tina who weren't able to make it. They volunteered hundreds of hours to try to improve communication between the zoo and the community. And I think you all should appreciate their work. Just want to say how incredibly disappointed these proceedings were. To hear officials make claims about the community work that are so different from what they say behind closed doors is deeply discouraging. The Save John Ball Park Community Group provided you an 11-page CBA that in addition to the park space in perpetuity, covered the zoo's commitment to conservation, maintaining quality of life, community engagement, event awareness and coordination, park amenities, traffic control, soundproofing and noise control, pollution control and environmental conservation, economic and employment opportunities, community health and wellness, review and enforcement mechanisms. Chair Stack has said that a park is a perfectly acceptable secondary use of this space. Save John Ball Park was told that this plan would focus on everything inside the zoo gates. That there have been promises over and over again to leave park space for the community. Is this how you want to run things with so much blatant deception and disregard for the people in our communities? You should be ashamed of yourselves. Save John Ball Park wants to work with us, wants to work with you to improve things for all, but this really makes us question whether genuine partnership is on the table or if you would like to meet once a month just to check a box. Hopefully, everyone here takes some time to reflect and do the right thing before this plan goes to the board in November. I believe most of that comment was in regard to something Al said about the substance of the CBA. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else? I don't see. There's a miscellaneous on this agenda. Is there a miscellaneous? Not sure what miscellaneous would be in this one. But at any rate, all right. If not, note that we are still looking at whether there's anything further by way of work sessions. But this is proposed to be submitted for final before the end of the year.
Yep.
Okay. With that, we are adjourned.